This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Good evening. I would like to call the meeting to order. All those who are able, please stand for a pledge of allegiance. It will be offered. This week's student pledge leader is Juliana Biggs. Juliana is a fifth grader from our Montessori school. And Principal Johnson, next to her, said Juliana is a leader in her classroom and the community. She strives to do her best in all areas and cares deeply about making a difference in the life of others. Juliana is an excellent friend and makes sure to include everyone. She has a passion for excellence and her kindness towards others is outstanding. Juliana, would you honor us, leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We convened earlier tonight at five and we went into closed session. Just to open the session to the public, I'd like to verify that we were in compliance with the open meeting law notification.
Yes.
Thank you. Please, let's do a roll call, verify a quorum again.
Commissioner Nordine.
Here.
Commissioner Becca.
Here.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Vu.
Here.
Thank you very much. We will have an open forum. During the open forum, each citizen will have, will be allowed up to four minutes to address the board, providing that he or she has additional or new information that has not been previously shared at the meeting. The school board will not hear personal complaints or school personnel, of school personnel, I'm sorry, nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Goings.
Good evening. My name is Mark Goings. I live at E17450, County Road V in Augusta. And what I want to talk about tonight is I'm excited that the board is continuing to talk about the referendum, what the referendum could be. Looking at the notes, it looks like we have to have the question together by January 19th of 2021. It's pretty amazing. We definitely have many, many capital needs. And I know after being on demo and trends the last four or five years, those are very apparent. But I also want you, as you're looking at your referendum task force list and calendar thing, and calendar items, look at what will the operational part of that referendum be? In our previous referendum, it was a hybrid referendum, but it had a strong capital component, but it also had an operational component. And for example, when I was looking at the task force list, I was looking, I didn't see things like, you know, will you get a report from human resources as far as are we able to attract and retain? And are we able to look at like subtopics of that? Like I know it's been brought up in our special ed department that our special ed assistance, we have a hard time attracting them. And so maybe we need to make a strategic change on that. That could be part of the referendum. Or like the increment study, which was postponed way back in the day until, with the idea that we looked at when we did the compensation overhaul, and then didn't have time to compensation overhaul, and it just has been postponed and postponed. But also, it's also a chance to also, you know, talk with like the teaching and learning department or go out to buildings and talk to principals about what would make a difference for our students. Because we have a lot of time between now and January to look at, besides the cinder blocks and grass seed, also look at where the magic happens with our students. Some other examples, well, some of that magic, like a few months ago, we had South Middle School came here and they talked about a program for at-risk students where they had, one of their counselors, I believe, was able to work with these at-risk students and then they also did go with the horseback riding ranch and stuff. And I was talking with some of the principals afterwards about that, saying, you know, it seemed like a really good idea. But one of the things in looking at that is, well, how, the question is always, well, how did they accomplish that? Well, in the staffing process, they made that a priority. But if I was a principal, if I was a parent, I wouldn't want to think, well, do we need to prioritize at-risk students and meeting their needs? Or does that mean that we then need to increase class size for a math class? You know, at the time when we're getting ready to decide the question for the community, we need to make sure and look at where does the magic happen in that community? When we look at our technology, rather than looking at how obsolete can our technology be before we have to replace it? Are there some things that could enhance what we do? And that's, those are the types of questions I hope that over the next six months, the board strategically looks at, do we need to have an operational part of that? We definitely, again, need to do South, a lot of things there. But I get, I bet if you talk to South, if you asked about moving the needle for students, the first thing would not be replace the heating system. You know, the heating system is a given. But our students should always be the priority in what we talk about. So I'm hoping that that's part of that discussion also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goings. And that's it for our forum tonight. Our next point in the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Harbick.
Good evening, everyone. I want to review the upcoming events for the school board. All of these events will take place in the administration building, starting with tomorrow's meeting of the Eau Claire Virtual School Governance Board at 4:30 PM. That will be followed at 7:00 PM by the Family Advisory Council meeting. March 10th, Policy and Governance will meet at 8:00 AM. That will be followed at 1:00 PM by the Budget Development Committee and at 4:00 PM by the LEAP Committee. And then on March 16th, there will be a school board meeting at 7:00 PM. So tonight, I am pleased to recognize three people who recently received awards from the Herb Cole Education Foundation. And first up is Taylor Kane. Taylor, is Taylor here? Okay. Taylor's a senior at McKinley Charter High School and she received a six, received $10,000 initiative scholarship. Taylor was one of just 193 graduating seniors across the state to receive the scholarship. And recipients at the schools are chosen for demonstrating strong initiative in the classroom and a promise for success in higher education and beyond. So she's here. Taylor, please stand up. We're glad that you made it and congratulations. Two ECASD staff members were named 2020 Teacher Fellows through the Herb Cole Foundation. Kaylee McGinnis, who's a sixth grade teacher at DeLong Middle School. Kaylee, are you here? Would you stand up, please? And Erin Athas, Library and Media Specialist at Montessori. Erin, thank you. They were selected for exhibiting leadership and service in and out of the classroom. Both Kaylee and Erin will receive $6,000 grant to help them engage in professional development or to achieve an unrealized goal for their classroom. So Taylor, Kaylee, and Erin will be honored by former Senator Cole at an April 26th awards banquet. And we'll be looking forward to congratulating you there as well. Tonight, we'd like to say thank you to a very special partner from the Chippewa Valley Museum, Carrie Ronender. Carrie, would you come up to the podium, please? Dr. Torres is going to present you with a certificate. The Chippewa Valley Museum has been a very valuable partner with ECASD for many years and for many special projects. But most recently, the CVM staff worked with our own Bill Geese to help create the display that's outside the boardroom to celebrate the history of this building as well as the original Eau Claire High School. And we are presenting this certificate to Carrie in recognition of the outstanding partnership that we've had over the years. And this latest project was just one more shining example of that partnership. So thank you for all the work that you do in supporting our students and in preserving the history of the Chippewa Valley. And this is National School Breakfast Week. Our Food and Nutrition Department works diligently each day to make sure that students can focus on their education and not on hunger. In January, the Food and Nutrition Staff served an average of 1,600 breakfasts each day. And last year, we served a total of 257,530 breakfasts. And that did not include summer school. So we want to thank our Director of Food and Nutrition and we also, Josh Gutenberg. And we also want to thank all of our dedicated staff. As Josh said to me the other day, we're the largest restaurant in Eau Claire. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harbick. The next point in the agenda is the President's Report. I have two items in my report tonight, very briefly. The first one, just to communicate that the board continues with its superintendent search. We are on schedule and we do not anticipate delays on that schedule. So we'll keep you posted about the forward movements that we're making. The second item is in the consent agenda for tonight, you will find a draft for a resolution in support of the Monk community in Eau Claire. This responds to concern that has been shared by our community in Eau Claire and in Wisconsin and nationwide as it relates to the recent proposal by the current presidential administration seeking to deport certain longtime Monk residents of the United States, which could impact up to 4,500 Monk people nationwide. Of course, this has sowed fear into the Monk communities across Wisconsin and of course, here in town. So we are requesting our leaders to reconsider this proposal and are expressing our opposition to any agreement that results in the deportation of Monk people living in Wisconsin or any other place in the United States. So that's what I wanted to share with you. The draft comes from Commissioner Vu. And I am in full support of it and I'm sure all of you will as well. And we can discuss further at the time when we consider this resolution approval. That's all for my report tonight. The next item in the agenda is a Student Representative Report. Morgan Plaine.
Good evening. I'd like to begin my report tonight with some athletic updates. The winter sports season is wrapping up. Boys' basketball will be facing North on Friday for their regional match. Girls' basketball beat Chippewa in the first round of regionals and ended their season with a loss to Bayport in the regional finals. Gymnastics won conference. Boys' swim and dive got fifth as a team at state and had several individual podium finishes, including three new school records. Boys' hockey beat Merrill in the first round of regionals and ended their season with a loss to Onalaska. Girls' hockey beat Hayward and lost to Hudson in the regional final. And Cheyenne Stunt placed third at state. In the arts, March 6th will be the Old Abe Show Choir Family and Fan Show. On March 9th, there is a Spring Show Choir Concert. This is a special event as it marks the first collaborative concert between North and Memorial Show Choirs. The concert will also feature choirs from all three middle schools in the finale. This event will take place at 6:00 PM at the Pablo Sando for the Arts. Ugana Rock will be taking place on Friday, March 13th. For those of you that are not familiar with the event, it is an annual charity concert featuring local and high school bands. And it is organized by the Ugana Rock Club at Memorial. This year, the proceeds are being donated to the Sojourner House. During the boys' basketball game this past Thursday, Memorial and North hosted their second annual Hoops for Special Olympics. Students from both schools wore red in support and donations were collected to raise money for local Special Olympics groups. Finally, volunteers from Chippewa Valley Votes visited students at both schools during academic and career planning last week to educate seniors on the voting process and to help register students to vote. And that is all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next point in the agenda is School Board Committee Reports. And we'll begin with Budget Committee.
Good evening. We, the, excuse me. The Budget Development Committee did meet last, the 25th of February. And we spoke about the OPEB actuarial study, which came in. It is talking about sort of the projections of savings based on the changes made to OPEB. I think it was, well, it was late last year. And we're working on, we just had a first look at it and it'll be coming to the full board soon. We also continued our discussion about the Employee Budget Engagement Committee and the charge for that committee. And again, that will also be coming to the fuller board shortly. And we meet again on Tuesday, March 10th at 1:00 PM, as Dr. Harbick mentioned.
Thank you very much. LEAP Committee.
LEAP's meeting for February was postponed. We intend to meet again on March 10th.
Thank you very much. Demo and trends.
The Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee met last Thursday. And we have currently two projects that we're working on. One is short-term relief for the schools in the, the elementary schools that are at or above 90% capacity. That would be Mann's, Meadowview, Putnam Heights. And then the other longer-term goal would be what will our solution be past the short term? And we are hoping to get the short-term relief recommendation within the next couple of weeks and the longer-term recommendation in August.
Thank you very much. And Policy and Governance, we met last Tuesday. We received Policy 185 about committees. And we sent it back to the full board consideration with amended language. And also, we have recommended policy about the relationship between the Eau Claire Area School District with the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation for full board consideration. That's all for School Board Committee Reports. The next point in the agenda is Legislative Update.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Dr. Nordine.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, the legislature passed a bill to use the state tax surplus. However, the governor vetoed that bill in that it did not, with the rationale that it did not include additional funds as he requested for schools. Right now, there is no floor time currently scheduled for the legislature. So it's a little up in the air as to how the spendable part of the budget surplus will be spent. Hopefully, the governor and legislature will reach a compromise. The governor did sign four bills today that were passed in that same session two weeks ago that relate to education, and they are Senate Bill 527, which changes the statutes governing the use of physical restraints and seclusion of students. Assembly Bill 49, which adjusts investment options for school trust money that funds library aid. Assembly Bill 531, which now requires that contact information for suicide prevention hotlines be included on all of our student ID cards. And Assembly Bill 644, which is a pilot mental health program in a different district. But of course, if it's successful, it may be expanded to the rest of the state. With tax surplus use still undecided, there's still plenty of time to contact your representatives and ask them to support or keep supporting funding for our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nordine. The next point in the agenda is the Consent Resolution Agenda. The board will consider approval of the Consent Resolution Agenda items. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. The items are Minutes of February 17, 2020, Minutes of Closed Session, February 17, 2020, Human Resources Improvement Report, Proposed Changes to Policies 672, Purchasing, Five-Year Capital Projects Beats, and Resolution in Support of the Monk Community.
Please pull that resolution.
Resolution in Support of Monk Community pulled out. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion moved by Dr. Nordine. A second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Vu. Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Nordine.
Yes.
Commissioner Becca.
Yes.
Commissioner Harder.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Vu.
Yes.
The consent agenda has been approved. Let's discuss resolution in support of the Monk community. Dr. Becca.
Thank you for providing leadership and bringing this resolution for us. And I was hoping that we would be able to share it with those that are listening into the board meeting today.
Can we pull it to, in the screen, to read it? Anyone volunteers to read it? I can, I can go ahead and read it. I'll read it from my computer, though. Whereas the state of Wisconsin has a rich history of opening its doors to peoples of all backgrounds and experiences. And whereas the state of Wisconsin is a proud home of nearly 50,000 Monk people, which is one-fifth of the Monk people living in the United States. And whereas most of the Monk people living in Wisconsin came here as refugees seeking asylum after fighting alongside our soldiers during the Vietnam War. And whereas the Monk, whereas many Monk people are part of our community here in Eau Claire as our neighbors, family members, friends, coworkers, business owners, students, and veterans. And whereas the Eau Claire Area School District Board of Education administrators, educators, and staff proudly stand by all our students, staff and families. And whereas we celebrate the values of our diverse community and are inclusive of all our students, staff, families, and community members of all races, ethnicities, faiths, national origins, immigration status, political viewpoints, abilities, sexual orientation, and gender identities. And whereas the United States Supreme Court, Prier versus Stone, 1982, held that the Constitution guarantees all children, regardless of immigration status, equal access to public education. And whereas a recent proposal by the current presidential administration seeks to deport certain longtime Monk residents in the United States, which could impact up to 4,500 Monk people nationwide. And whereas the proposals have sowed fear into the Monk communities across Wisconsin, including our own in Eau Claire. And whereas numerous community leaders and local and national elected officials have called on the administration to reconsider this proposal and have expressed their opposition to any agreement that results in the deportation of Monk people living in Wisconsin and in the United States. Therefore, be resolved that the Eau Claire Area School District Board of Education reiterates its steadfast support for all the members of the Monk community living here in the United States, state of Wisconsin, and especially our students, staff, and families in our district. And furthermore, we strongly urge the reconsideration of any proposal that would result in the deportation of any members of our Monk community. In witness thereof, the undersigned being all the members of the Board of Education of the Eau Claire Area School District have executed this resolution on the second day of March, 2020. Yes.
A motion, we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
A motion has been presented by Commissioner Lyons and a second by Commissioner Klinkhammer. Those who approve, please say aye.
Aye.
And any that opposes, same sign. Thank you. The resolution has been approved. Our next point in the agenda is individually considered resolutions. And we have the Eau Claire Virtual School Expansion Proposal. That'll be Mr. Schmidt.
Would you like a presentation or would you, a summary from the last meeting? Or would you just want to move ahead with your motion?
Do you have a summary?
I have a short summary if you'd like.
Yes.
I'm the one that's going to put it in the board docs tonight. If I share something with you right now, could you pop it up? If I click here, will it move it? All right, we'll, we'll do this a little differently. This is for dramatic emphasis, the delay, so sorry for that.
You got all those, you got all of us anxious.
Exactly. So a summary from, and this is a big condensed from our presentation in the last meeting, just to bring you back up to speed with where we left off. We talked about this alignment to the strategic plan with the virtual school and how it addressed each of those areas, and then how the mission for the virtual school aligned with the Eau Claire Area School District's mission. We also talked about why there was a need, and actually, this generated, I believe, a question about the MLSS with the virtual school, and we sent you a memo regarding that in terms of the fact that the virtual school in two perspectives. One is, it is a tier-one program for students that there's a good alignment already for that type of programming for them. But for students where the traditional programming doesn't work, that interruption to learning, it has that tier-two intervention. We also talked in that, in that, in that memo also just about the components of the multi-level system of support, especially the tier-one pieces and the foundational piece. Could you move to the next one, Mia? And that's a little snapshot of that piece that we shared with you as well. So the, the next slide. As a summary, currently this year, there are 28 slots, grade six through 12. The proposal looks at increasing that by 14, which is an average of two per grade level over those seven grade levels, and the 22 students would be in fourth and fifth grade, and that teacher would not be from the Pearson platform. It would actually be an Eau Claire Area School District employee that we would have to post for, hire, and then staff, and would be working from within the district to support students here. This is a summary of the revenue and expenses sheet that we shared with you as well, and we know that some of these costs that are in the, in the gap between the surplus and expenses are some of those costs from our staff supporting the program. But in general, this has done a couple of things that we've looked for from the district. It's provided some increased revenue, but it has also brought some people back to our district that have gone to virtual programming. It has drawn in some students from open enrollment. It has drawn in students that are from our private schools and from homeschooling as well. So it's been a big win for the district, and it serves, think of it as one piece along the continuum of services we provide to our students. If you approve this, then we would do that, we would do the lottery drawing for grades six or 12 on March 9. We already have over 40 students on that list for the spots that are available for, to fill. So right now, we're at about, I think it was 20, I should know this off the top of my head, but I think it's 20 students right now. We have eight plus the other students. We, so we have enough to fill if we do expand. And then if we do do the approval for grades four and five, you can see the dates that we have available up there as well. If you decide to postpone or change it, we would adjust the dates accordingly. Thanks, Mia. I'll say something.
Sorry. Commissioner Harder?
I just wanted to take a chance again to say, I remember when this was an idea. It was barely more than a year ago, maybe, maybe two. Yeah. And it was an exciting idea, but to see it executed here and working is really exciting, and I'm just so grateful to, to our staff here for making this happen. So that's my ask, definitely.
Thank you. Any other questions or commentaries? Well, thank you very much. This is very exciting. We're going to go ahead and, and vote. And I will need a motion to approve the Eau Claire Virtual School Expansion Proposal as presented.
So moved.
Motion presented by Commissioner Lyons.
Second.
And a second by Dr. Nordine. Let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
The motion has been approved. Thank you very much. Our next point in the agenda is we're going to adjourn to committee and board committee reports. And the first report is on literacy initiative update. Mr. Schmidt.
I didn't go very far. I knew I was right back up. All right, good evening. As you can tell, we have a large panel to share the experience for, with you about our literacy initiative. We've reported it before, but we really wanted to bring the voices of the practitioners and the leaders in the building to be able to share the experience K-12. This program, or this initiative, we've been working on this for over three years. We are not going to highlight today the early learning program piece. We could add that information if you like, because a lot of the things that we are doing at the elementary level in the K-5 program, especially foundational reading skills, have been present in our early learning program. So we really want to take the time, given the large number of people we had here, to really focus on the program at the K-12 level. So the, the work of the folks at these, that they're going to share with you is, we've got a lot of centralized services supporting this as well. And as we, when we get done, if you do have questions, our staff is here to assist in any questions you might have. Lori House, Barbara Goings is not able to join us this evening, but Becky Graff and Lori House are here. So we'll get started. The alignment of the strategic plan, and we usually like to start, of course, each of our presentations this way, and this really looks at that alignment, that academic achievement to have an aligned program. That's one of the key components, and students' social, emotional growth is really about that supportive learning environment. The collaborative cultures is, and you'll hear especially throughout this presentation, especially when we talk about the ninth-grade experience memorial, really the, the effective collaboration on the work that is, that is taking place, and then the high-quality staff, that training. We're going to point actually to a little bit of data to show you some of the leading indicators about our training for staff in terms of trying to help them be equipped with the skills that they need to successfully implement the work that we are trying to accomplish in literacy. So we've shared with you the three major phases of the work, and really, phase one, even before we began, this was already happening at the elementary level. We were really working on writing, and then we added, we added the secondary work when they began into writing as well. And just like the elementary had started earlier, they're now have shifted into the reading work on phase two, and the phase one is still happening right now with the secondary level. And then we will be diving into speaking and listening as the next component, but it's going to take us a little bit to get there. Toward the end, we're going to talk at the very end just about making sure we connect all the dots on these three major areas, or four major areas, the, the writing, the reading, and the speaking and listening. So the part that's gotten some attention at the state level, DPI did this endorsement recently about the, and you'll hear a lot about phonics instruction, the science of reading, and, and you'll hear lots of terms like whole language and balanced literacy and phonics, et cetera, and where are we as a district? And really, we talked about balanced literacy. The thing that wasn't really balanced was an explicit focus on phonemic awareness and phonics instruction in our program. It was there, but we did not intentionally make sure to carve out the time and resources to implement it based on the science of reading that is available to us. This conversation really became active in our district about four years ago, and teachers reached out to us really wanting to, knowing that their students were struggling, but really wanted to make sure that they had the skills and, and the science backing behind their strategies to be successful. So we come to you today, and I talked just a few moments ago about leading indicators and lagging. And the lagging would be the student performance. We're not ready to share that yet because we now are in the implementation phase this year. But some of the leading indicators we have are positive, and we'll share that in just a moment. But some of the pieces, Education Advisory Board worked with us last spring and into the summer. And one of the things that's always hard sometimes for people to recognize is that reading is not a natural act, unlike speaking, which is something that students pick up by modeling from those around them. Reading is, doesn't work the same way. And then you can see basically, students have the ability to all learn to read, but you have to go through certain progressions to successfully get there. And the variance that we see at the high school has a lot to do with what, the reading instruction that students receive at a younger age. A certain percentage of students, about a third of them, will succeed through a variety of methods that are not really, they'll pick it up from, from modeling around them, but there's a large number of students that do not. And so that's where that skill training, or the training of skills that our staff will share with our students comes, comes into play. And you can see the number of research studies that show the direct effect of phonics and phonemic awareness instruction for our students. So the foundational skills that we are working on include the items that are listed up here. And again, you will see, you'll hear the term phonics right here quite a bit. The phonemic awareness that leads into that is really the foundation for developing that phonics instruction. I talked about leading indicators, and we had some training for our staff in June, and then we just had another professional development experience on February 24. And we looked at the increase from the feedback of our students on their, on their comfort and expertise, and we saw a quite a big increase already. So we are hearing from our staff that they're feeling more confident and have those skills. And then as we look into the, toward the end of the year and looking, we, we hope to see, that then gets into lagging indicators, which would be the performance of our students on the, on the tools that we have in place. And you can see a couple of quotes that we have from staff in our district in terms of the training and their appreciation for what we are bringing to the table for them. So to walk you through that journey on the professional development, I'm going to slowly, now I'm going to do this little dance. I'm going to bring up people one at a time. And the first one is from the elementary literacy lens and the work that they did to prepare the materials and lead the training and how their work has changed. So Erin Rens from Roosevelt is going to be the first one to share that experience with you, and then we'll talk about the classroom experience from our teachers.
So I'd first would like to begin by just saying that it's been an honor to be part of this project and the work that's been taking place in our elementary schools with our teachers and our literacy coaches and our coordinators. To begin with, when we take a look at the reading foundational skills, scope, and sequence, we know that word study is an essential component of developing students as readers, writers, and of course, critical thinkers. Word study that facilitates student growth encompasses phonological awareness, print concepts, phonics and word recognition, learning and using decoding and encoding strategies, which are the reading and writing strategies, and vocabulary acquisition, all of which happens in a systematic way within a structure that promotes direct and explicit instruction, active engagement, and application of skills learned. And then, of course, the final piece of that cycle of learning is really sharing that the new knowledge that they've acquired is built upon previous skills that have been mastered. This cycle of learning is highly visible with the teaching, the learning, the engagement, and the student feedback. So coaches, along with our coordinator, set out to support teachers with increasing the intentionality and the quantity of explicit word study instruction, and to lay out a clear pathway for universal systematic teaching that ensures that all students receive a guaranteed and viable word study curriculum. The fruit of these efforts, the fruit of these efforts became known as our scope and sequence, our K-5 foundational skills and word study pacing guides. The foundational skills and word study pacing guides, our scope and sequence, are comprised of the expectations set forth by the Common Core standards, as well as research-based word study curric, continuums, practices, instructional strategies, and resources. The pacing guides serve as a universal learning targets across the school year for each of our grade levels. The pacing guides include specific trimester learning targets, trimester assessments that help teachers and collaborator, collaborators, excuse me, reflect on student progress and guide differentiation within our instruction. The pacing guides also include resources for supporting teaching and learning, as well as ongoing professional development. So that's, in a nutshell, that would be the pacing guides that you see on our slide here. Can I move forward to the next? Yeah, I knew I shouldn't do it. Okay, thank you. Okay, so then the next piece of, of the implementation was really looking at how coaches support staff with this endeavor. So new this year was a bit of a restructuring of the role of the elementary literacy coach as full-time coaches in all of our elementary schools. And the coaches have spent time learning about the different modes of coaching for increased student achievement. We have closely studied the works and ideas of Diane Sweeney through the professional read, which is highlighted here in our PowerPoint, Student-Centered Coaching. This work has focused our intentions and efforts on developing collaborative partnerships with teachers, as well as, as, because we share a common vision of increasing student achievement, so that collaborative partnership is essential. Literacy coaches have worked with common coaching cycles to ensure that coaches work with all of the grade levels and to ensure that coaches have shared experiences to support our efforts with continuous growth within our own professional learning communities. The coaches have also worked closely with building principles to develop school structures and practices that foster a culture of collaboration. Student-centered coaching puts the emphasis of collaboration on student growth, and the goals are developed based on increasing student outcomes. Explicit instruction, engaging students in applying the content, monitoring student progress, collecting data, and being responsive to student needs are all part of the systematic approach to student-centered coaching. This style of coaching pairs well with the implementation of the foundational skills and word study curriculum. Coaches support teachers within the word study block, collaborating around content and practices that enhance student learning, as well as within the context of reading and writing for transfer of knowledge and application of the skills that they have learned. Student-centered coaching is not limited to just word study. It happens across all aspects of a teacher's day and within literacy instruction. Coaches are partnering with teachers to increase student achievement, or perhaps teachers are working on a personal goal to, to develop and grow their own personal professional capacity through shared learning experiences. When colleagues collaborate, we see students achieve. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. And so the impact, and as Erin talked about, the full-time emphasis towards coaching and really dedicating time to supporting teachers, that focus this year is, is new focus, and we'd like to hear now from the teachers that are experiencing that. So if you notice, by the way, the folks that are joining you, we try to grab people from different buildings. So we have a literacy coach from Roosevelt that, Sarah Loback is going to join us next from Meadowview at the primary level. So really, that K-3 is such a critical phase of reading instruction and foundational reading skills. And then we'll have a group from, that'll follow them from Roosevelt that will talk to you about the intermediate level. So Sarah's going to join us next, just to share her story of the work that's been taking place over the past year.
Hi, my name is Sarah Loback, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Meadowview. And I just want to speak to a little bit about my experience and our team and our school's experience this year at that lower elementary level regarding the new foundational skills rollout and instruction that we've been taking part in. You know, at our grade level, we're really working on building those really strong foundational skills, such as that phonological awareness, those mastery of print concepts, and that direct phonics instruction, so that our students have a strong base as they move up into the upper grades and they're able to apply those skills more independently. I think what we've seen at our level is that clear and defined scope and sequence, not just in our own grade level, but across all grade levels, has really helped to tailor our instruction so that we know we're meeting the needs of our students as best as we can. It gives us a clearer picture of what our students are coming in with and where our students are going to. So we can not only teach the students in front of us, but we can also help to meet the needs of the students that are above grade level and knowing what skills we can push them towards, and also working on interventions with students that are below grade level. All of those things has just led to stronger collaboration around our foundational skills, not only at our grade-level PLCs, but we are able to dig really deep into the data and say, our students definitely know this and they can do it, and our students need more practice and more work, and how are we going to get them there? So if they don't know it, what are we going to do differently to change our instruction around those specific skills so that we can work them towards the independence of, of all of those foundational skills? It's also starting to increase our collaboration around foundational skills across our grade levels within our building as we all become more familiar with the foundational skills. We know that those upper grades- We know that those upper grades have a little bit more of a challenge, building up all of the things that they haven't gotten in, you know, K through three. But we're having discussions now around things like open and closed syllables. And oh my goodness, your students in first grade know what that is? That's going to make my life so much easier when they get to fourth grade. And, and so we're having those discussions about what we can do as a staff to meet their needs. We're not only seeing it just within the foundational skills and the areas of reading and writing, but I'm seeing it in my students show up in math as my little first graders who are six and seven are able to read and decode words and story problems in math that they haven't been able to read before. They're able to apply those skills in multiple different areas. Their writing is stronger in science and social studies. Their sentence writing, because those print concepts are much stronger. And my students, just a little story, like I had a little girl last week who is, you know, she's a striving learner. She's working really hard and she said, well, Mrs. Loback, can you believe how much we've learned? And she said, I know digraphs and I know blends and I know vowel teams. And that started a conversation within the rest of the class on how easy it is to break apart really large words, like the word interesting came up in one of our books. And they said, we'd never be able to look at that before and now we know how to read that word. And then another student said, and if we know how to read it, we know how to write it. So they're starting to see that application and the benefits of being able to do that even as lower elementary first graders. So thank you for all the work that's being done.
So as Sarah said, the, the students at the intermediate level, the upper elementary grades, they haven't been part of this work, the intentional work leading up to this year. So there is actually curriculum in support in place for those students, even moving forward for this year and moving forward. So we have a team coming from Roosevelt, Lori Jo Brodt and Shawna Walthor are going to share their experience with you at Roosevelt.
Hi, I'm Lori Jo Brodt and this is my job share partner Shawna Walthor. And we teach fifth grade at Roosevelt Elementary. We're lucky where we get to partner with Erin Rens, the literacy coach there. So in fifth grade, foundational skills and word study learning targets include the decoding, the reading, encoding, writing, word morphology involving the Greek and Latin prefixes and affixes, roots, and then the vocabulary acquisition. More specifically, we've been working with our students with syllification patterns, breaking words down into their syllable parts and using that information to help the kids decode the word, be able to read it, or to be able to spell it. And then bringing it to a meaning, a meaning level where you can look at those word parts to figure out the meanings of the words. As we move into the third trimester, we're going to look a lot at the Greek and Latin prefixes and affixes and using that to help kids understand the meaning of words. So an example from our classroom would be, we would teach the kids the Latin prefix sub. And we'd go through together and brainstorm a bunch of different words that begin with sub. Subtopic, submarine, subzero. And then we'd look at those words together and try to figure out the definition of what sub might mean. And then from there, we would transfer that information into our word study notebooks that we could go back and reference later and then look for those type of words to pop up in our reading to help us understand what we're reading.
As classroom teachers, it has been encouraging to see the interest and engagement of our students that they have displayed when being taught new word study concepts. We as teachers are grateful for the work the literacy coaches have put into creating the grade level scope and sequences and the resources that have been shared with us to help us plan and teach our word study lessons. This comment document has allowed my teaching partners and I to collaborate, to plan, and approach our lessons with clear objectives in mind.
So as a grade level, we've made word study notebooks that the kids can use to put resources in and notes and Inker charts. Would you like to see one?
We have fun little notebooks with Inker charts. Yeah, so just different examples of Inker charts that we have, different lessons that we're teaching. Root words, kind of the base words and some definitions with them. Here's our vocabulary that we touch on in the first trimester of suffixes. So these are available for the kids to have as a resource.
And then we're able to, a lot like what Sarah said too, is we use this information to help us with our PLCs. So we're, we made mid-trimester assessments and other kind of quick checks to go through and see how the kids are doing so we can monitor their progress and then be responsive with our instruction based on that information.
And with the guidance of Erin, we have taken our word study block and set it up in a structure that looks like teach, apply, share. During our word study lessons, we first present short explicit instruction to help our students develop an understanding of the word concepts that we are teaching. We then have students apply the strategy by doing some sort of hands-on activity. And in the end, the students share it with their classmates, their thinking and their learning. This allows students to take an active role in their learning. We have seen fifth grade students apply the foundational skills that we are teaching them both in their reading and their writing across multiple content areas. All of our readers and writers, even those who struggle, have made gains in the area of foundational reading, which we feel is a large part due to the explicit instruction that the kids have received this year. As educators, our knowledge and understanding of these word study concepts has grown right alongside the kids. The students often say, the kids are often the ones that say, let's decode that word and see if that will help us understand what it means. There's a lot of excitement and curiosity in our classroom when it comes to discovering the meanings of unknown words. As classroom teachers, we couldn't ask for a better outcome.
Thank you.
So we're shifting the lens now to the principal, because the principal has to lead that work in his or her building. And so Jake Donzie from Robbins is going to share with you the experience that he's had in terms of making the shift with his, with his staff.
Hi, everybody. So coming into this, it's kind of interesting to think about. So science takes a while sometimes to work its way into education. There are all these great studies and a lot of talk in the science community, but then it takes a long time to get that to come into play into schools just because, to borrow one of Mr. Schmidt's words here, it's a big lift when you do something like that. I think it just takes a lot of work to do that. So huge kudos to the people behind the scenes at the Lit Coach level and the literacy team level who have really made an actual plan for this and have figured out under many, many hours, figuring out the scope and the sequence and what this is going to look like. So one of the blessings last year of having 78 snow days was that we had that bonus time at the end of the year. And to use it for this, to introduce the teachers to it was, was a really good use of time. And it gave people some time to digest it. I think it's sometimes hard to hear something right before the school year starts and then here we go. So to hear it in June, really have some great presenters and to take that in and then have a summer to process it, have some time to work through it, was really helpful. Because the teachers themselves, as some of them have spoken to already, really want to know the why behind it, because it gives them that much more passion, that much more reason to teach what they're teaching. So once we could understand the research, I think that went a long way to raising the comfort level of the staff. So the second part here where I was talking about making time for it, it's not like teachers in the buildings had like an hour where they're like, oh, I wish I had something to fill this hour with. You know, they already had a full schedule. So it was a matter of how do we relook at, at the way we do the schedule to make sure we're fitting in this really essential material? And then how do we make it the norm? How do we schedule these new practices into our daily routine and make them really effective for kids and make the kids get into them in that way? As they referenced too, there are the phonological pieces and the phonics pieces that in, at least in my teaching undergrad, there wasn't a lot of focus on that. That is something that if you're teaching, depending on where you're teaching, and I was at the middle school and high school level, there was a lot, wasn't a lot of emphasis for me in teaching kids how to read. I taught kids how to analyze reading, but by the time they were in my class, the assumption was they could read in that way. So even if you're at the intermediate elementary level, a lot of that teaching kids to read part, that foundational piece is, is really, really important. And what we found is if, if in the K1 level, they're not getting that phonological piece and that phonemic awareness piece and that phonics piece, by third, fourth, fifth grade, there's a big dip in those kids in terms of their, their reading abilities, because suddenly they could decode just fine, but now they can't figure out in terms of the affixes and the prefixes and the suffixes. They, they can't figure out the meanings of some of these words and that really hurts the vocabulary. So we wanted to make it the norm. So as they're going through this process, it becomes the norm of what we do. So as I put up there, we're learning a lot as we go. There have certainly been some bumps in terms of, we want this lesson to take 15 minutes or this part to take 30 minutes and it takes 45 or it takes 55. And then you have to adjust as you go throughout the year. But there's, with a lot of support from our literacy coaches and the literacy teams, that's been really helpful. And I think we're building momentum throughout the year. As was referenced, referenced by the teachers earlier, I was in a classroom the other morning in a first grade class and it was neat hearing the kids, as they're listening to a story, be like, that's a digraph and that's a diphthong and things like, I mean, things that adults might not even recognize. But the kids, I mean, they're locked into like, that's a blend and we can figure that out and we can talk through that. So that's been really exciting to hear and, and I think it's really going to pay a lot of dividends in the future. It's really been a good process so far. Thank you.
So we're going to shift to middle school. And at the middle school level, when we start sixth grade, there's an explicit class of reading and there's a separate class for English. And keeping those two separate was an idea that South wanted to challenge. And they worked on this just at their building last year. And so Paul Lurin is not able to join us. I mean, he had to take care of a personal matter. So Eric Gagne is going to join us and talk through a lot of, some of the thinking behind why South wanted to pilot what they are trying. And then Ryan Cuff, a sixth grade teacher, is going to talk to you about his experience in that process as well. And again, now we're shifting a little bit more because the work right now is a lot around writing, but this is really an idea where they wanted to take those two different pieces and meld them together.
Good evening. So at South Middle School this year, we've been piloting an ELA block and a math block. And how it looks in ELA is it's a 75-minute block and it combines writing slash English and reading. And like you can see up there, after talking to staff and, and going into classrooms and talking to students, there is a big connection between the reading and the writing piece when you have them put together. Another aspect of this is the piece about experienced reading teachers. It's really about having the opportunity to collaborate. And when I taught at South Middle School seven years ago, I taught two reading, sections of reading and three sections of social studies. And I had Ms. Morgan Prem in my social studies class. Hi, Morgan. But there was probably five reading teachers at the time and we didn't have a lot of time within the school day to collaborate. This block schedule has allowed the ELA teachers to have that time. So fourth hour, they have team time and they have, have a chance to collaborate and learn from one another. The reduced number of transitions during the day, so the block schedule is 75 minutes. So that means that they are in a block for a period and a half. So it reduces a four-minute transition. And while we might not think that's a lot, four times five is 20 minutes. And if you, if I did my math kind of right, it's about 12 hours throughout the year that you would add for instructional time. The improvement of learning is, is a biggie, of course, in trying to close that achievement gap. And one thing about block is that, is that a block teacher will have three 75 minutes, which is 225 minutes of instructional time. Other social studies teacher, science teacher would have five sections of relatively 49 minutes or let's say 50 minutes, which is 250 minutes. So the ELA block teachers have 25 minutes where they can push in to another ELA teacher's classroom and co-teach or do some enrichment or reteaching of a smaller group. Or we created something called WIN, which takes place at the end of the day during resource time where ELA teachers and math teachers, but we're talking ELA right now, ELA teachers would identify some enrichments or some reteaching and some students would go with them at the end of the day. And that would, that would make up for the 250 minutes of teaching time. So it's, it's been real effective, I think. We would like to continue it. I would like to thank Ryan, who is going to speak next. He's an ELA teacher at, at South. Him and the other ELA staff have put a lot of time and we talked about collaboration. They collaborate, they work together. It's, they have gone through some hard times, but in the end, it's, it's been positive. There's some also, some collaboration that's been done with the other two middle schools. Like to recognize that too. And also there's people within these walls here that have helped support the pilot program that we have at South Middle School for not only ELA, but for math. So thank you.
So Ryan's going to come up and actually, the one thing that I didn't, I left off at the beginning is, again, this was, this was an innovation that was designed itself by their staff. And so Ryan and their staff were instrumental in actually getting this here. It was one of those things where we tried to stay out of the way as much as we could and support where needed. And then Ryan's going to give you a little bit of his experience through that transition.
Hi, I'm Ryan Cuff. As Eric spoke to, he kind of spoke to, spoke to the purpose of the ELA block. I'm going to talk about the, some of the primary, the preliminary results we sort of saw. Since the ELA block integrates reading and writing, we've really seen students making stronger, deeper connections. And it's that connections that we've seen more than previous and really drove us to understand that the, that the students were improving in their learning. That more time gave us just the more time to make those connections and for the students to go, to go deeper. That, that really just resulted in better quality teaching, better quality lessons. And as I've said three times, like overall in student, student learning. That improvement in student learning, we saw there with an increase in star scores and really the number of students that had an SGP of that 35 or, or more. This is just our first year into this, so I don't know how much we can look at that data and rely on it, but it's, it's something and it's exciting to, to see. The better quality teaching and collaboration, this is something we struggled with in the years previous when we had seven to eight reading teachers not having time to collaborate through the day. And what do we do? And how do we figure out where to go? With the ELA block means we're, we've reduced the number of reading teachers from seven to eight, really down to four, four ELA teachers and four teachers who are experienced and really want to teach reading. Not, not like maybe like Eric was sort of talking about where he had to teach reading as sort of that extra subject. So that, that's been a big positive, getting reading teachers teaching reading. The, the less, that less transition piece, that we talk about less stress and anxiety for students. Less transitions during the day is important, but really what we're seeing is that it slows the pace down for these kids. They've, by reducing one class, they're down to six classes rather than seven. That makes a tremendous difference. They're, they're moving less. They're, they're having to do less in terms of so many during the day. And I, I think we've seen there's a lot less stress and anxiety for students. Something we didn't anticipate, that was sort of a really nice, sort of a result, was that improved hallway behavior. We didn't anticipate that, but because kids are moving at different times, that's really been significant. We see a lot less hallway behavior and, and problems at that time. But the less stress and anxiety for students, I think is really important. When you looked at that first slide that Jim had had up with the alignment to the strategic plan, when you're talking about social and emotional, that, those growths, that's huge in sixth grade. That's, that's a big thing about middle school is really keeping that in mind because it's a tough, it's a tough couple of years. And so that was an important piece that we started to see. The higher student engagement and connections with teachers, the, the ELA block, the ELA block has really improved learning because students are, like I said before, making those reading, writing connections. You're hearing it from elementary all the way up to us and that's, that's the whole point, is connecting and making those connections. When reading was disjointed as a separate class last year, we, we didn't have the same students. And so trying to make those connections was, was a real challenge. So that's been something that we've really liked. It gives us that time to go deeper and really make deeper meaning out of what we're trying to do. And there's been an increase in student engagement. Students seem to be more involved and more engaged in what we're doing. And the relationships, the relationships we're able to develop with the students, surprisingly, it's only 25 minutes longer than the 45-minute class, but it's been significant. but it's been significant. Again, sort of that last piece was the allowed better push-in with English learners and special ed. This was sort of an unrealized result that we didn't anticipate. But with just a little more time, our EOL teachers and our SPED teachers can have a little more time to get in, be involved, push in, do some work within that class. The forty-nine minutes was really cutting it tight to try to do that. All of this revolves around a writing workshop, which takes their sixty-minute lessons. So having seventy-five-minute class time gives us that flexibility and that leeway to do that. I'd say overall, the team at South, I'm only one that's representing, we were a little skeptical going in. We weren't quite sure. I'd say for certain, we're a hundred percent on it now. We really like what we've seen. The improvement in student learning is there. We see it in their daily work. We see it in their writing. We see it in the quality of what they're producing. I think we've been really pleased with it, and we're looking forward to continue with it, if it's possible. We're happy. So, yeah. Thank you.
So we're going to shift finally to the high school level. We're going to start first with ninth grade at Memorial. The ninth grade teachers, we wanted to have them come in, but they weren't available today. Their facilitator, instructional coach Rebecca Neville, will talk to you a little bit about how the master schedule and aligning their prep has allowed for them to do their writing work together. And so we'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Gagne, I can do you one better. Not only did I teach Morgan, I also taught Erin Harder. Last spring, we were given permission to set up some collaboration times, some common planning time, for our English nine, Algebra I, Earth Science, and US History teams, where they would have a common prep. And then this summer, they prepared. They started planning so that they could hit the ground running this fall when school started. They, too, were a little bit skeptical. Why are you giving us all this time together? What could we possibly do with it? And they've done wonders. I know that the English nine team meets every Wednesday, and they have some common writing assessments, where they're able to sit down, talk about the data, and actually plan mini lessons and writing workshop things to bring to their classes. And then they come back, and they're constantly collecting data and planning instructional practice. Algebra I was really reluctant, because this is math. What can we possibly do with math? But now they are looking at cutting their units down and infusing writing into all of their math assessments, and talking about how to best score this. They're calibrating their grading. Earth Science, the same thing. And now they've gone one step further, and I've been working with them on how to actually model writing instruction in science. And they are seeing phenomenal gains in their student performance. In fact, Bev Pearson, one of the Earth Science teams, said, "You know, last year when I gave this assessment, my enriched kids, their average score was eighty-five percent. This year, in using modeling of writing with my students, I'm actually seeing them score higher in regular Earth Science than I saw in enriched Earth Science last year." The US History team has been working at improving reading instruction using their data, but also tying things to the ACT standards and that common practice. So overwhelmingly, these teams are finding that they're not just meeting once a week, but they're meeting daily, sometimes for five minutes, just to touch base. And I think that will bleed over into some common planning opportunities that we're planning for them next year. So we are seeing a great commitment to improving disciplinary literacy.
So our last visit is going to be from the other side of town. We started with a literacy coach, and we will finish with a literacy coach. So Paulette Samson's going to share North's story in terms of the disciplinary literacy work that she's been facilitating with them.
So at North, our literacy team consists of thirteen educators from ten different disciplines. And our goal is to take one skill and have those teachers learn it really, really well, so they can apply it to their content area. And it all starts by honoring the teachers' voices. We collect data from them, maybe some objectives, or what skills they're interested in. And then we cross-reference that with some research. Then the team chooses what we call a considerate skill, because based on the limited time we have to learn together in our buildings, we want to teach them something that's accessible and doable. Therefore, we're considerate of their time. Plus, we really want to emphasize a common language for all of our content areas, so that the kids, when they hear the word in annotation, they all know what that means for a specific content area. Then we make a deliberate, transparent plan. And that's when it's really cool to have ten different disciplines sitting around, because they're all reminding us of the diverse learners in their classes. And this year, we chose annotation for complex texts. And what that means is that students are having commentary on their texts. And at this point, now, we are taking their commentary and creating bigger writing projects.
So a couple of things about putting this presentation together. One is, there was no rehearsal on this. You know, we all collaborated from afar, but I think you see one theme, and that is, we have highly trained and skilled experts in our field. They're really passionate about this work, and that's really exciting to be part of. It didn't take much at all to get people to come to want to share their story. It's very exciting work. And as you can see, as we move forward in terms of those phases, is to build on that success that you heard about today, and to continue to align our resources. I talked about, you heard a lot about connecting dots. Ryan was real explicit about the reading and writing, and we talked also that what will be coming up is that speaking and listening piece. That'll continue to be part of that work. And that disciplinary literacy that really was pointed to explicitly by Paulette and Rebecca is almost a refocus. We started really heavy down the disciplinary literacy work at the beginning, spent some time into English Language Arts, but really that disciplinary literacy and the bang-for-your-buck, if you will, in terms of impacting the entire student body. We are really, really honing in on that harder than ever in our work. And we have a team that represents the district that really works on the next steps in the implementation process. And then finally, we'll be looking, as Ryan talked about that achievement data, he talked about some preliminary data, really looking at achievement data to refine what it is that we're doing moving forward. So it's exciting work. We took a fair amount of time to try to paint a picture for you of the things that are happening in the district. And it's, we'll continue. This is not a short-term project, but it's going to have a very positive impact for our students. So at this point, we'll take any questions that you have. And I have a bunch of people that could answer them that are hanging out over there, too. So...
Commissioner Harder?
This is great. Thank you for the update. Now, this is, am I right in saying this is sort of an evolution of ELA, the term we use?
Right. So the English Language Arts would be the specific discipline, but the literacy work really goes across all disciplines, because as Rebecca did such a nice job of explaining, you know, in science, in math, you can really have specific literacy instruction take place within your content area.
I do remember, I seem to remember the cross-content concept being part of ELA. And it was always very exciting to me to see it, and it's exciting to see it moving, seeing it in practice here. It's great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the team, from board members? We are in committee report, so are there any questions from the public? Herein on, we're going to thank you for this presentation. Thank you to the presenters coming from the schools. We appreciate the work that you do every day. And we're looking forward with much enthusiasm to see the results at the end of the year and the years to come. Thank you very much. Our next point in the agenda is law enforcement officials and school resource officers annual report.
So, good evening. Sergeant Wise and I are here tonight. Sergeant Wise is from the Eau Claire Police Department. And we are pleased to offer you the first annual report of the work that the Eau Claire School District does and the Eau Claire Police Department do, together with our school resource officers. Our partnership with the Eau Claire Police Department and our SROs, Alliance to the District Plan in the areas that you can see, bolded in the slide, but really particularly, when we look at the strategic plan, preparing every student to be critical thinkers, to solve problems, to communicate effectively, and to work collaboratively with others, is exactly what our school resource officers do. They also help to maintain a safe and supportive learning environment for students. They assist students to take responsibility for their learning and for their behavior. And they implement partnerships focused on assuring post-secondary success for each of our graduates. Sergeant Wise and I are here tonight because Policy 445 outlines the partnership between the district and the Eau Claire Police Department. The policy outlines three items within the annual review. You can see them on the slide. The policy indicates that we are to review SRO and student contact data annually. We are to review the policy, and we are to review the MOU between the district and the police department. And so that is what we are charged with doing tonight. I'm going to start with a review of the 2019-20 data. This year, in the Eau Claire School District, we have five school resource officers who have had approximately one thousand three hundred and fifty contacts with students, staff, and families. We've examined those contacts, and tonight, we'd like to share with you why students and SROs contact one another, which students tend to have contact with our SROs, and what happens when students and SROs have contact with one another. The resource part of a school resource officer is very important. The majority of our SRO contacts are initiated at the request of a staff member, or a student, or a parent, or a community member. It's important that the stakeholders see our SROs as a resource to them, and someone who can support our school communities. After being contacted by students, staff, or families, you'll see here that there are many reasons that we have the contacts, and actually, just over fifty percent of them are proactive contacts by our SROs, or positive contacts. So we have things like proactive contacts, being events and presentations, ensuring the student welfare of our students, or another proactive contact that was documented. Our SROs actually document any formal contact that is made with either a student, or a parent, or a staff member. Here are some of the examples from the data that was gathered this year. Our SROs documented, for example, a contact that said a student was sick and EMS was called. That's one of the data points that you'll see in the graph. There was a documentation about introduction to freshman parents at a parent presentation. Interviewing a student in reference to her involvement in a physical confrontation, a parking lot crash, or ten, or twelve. Presentations during criminal justice class, student who reported witnessing an overdose at home. Talking to a student about social media usage. A victim of theft. Locating a student who was reported as a runaway. Talking with a student about fighting in the laws regarding that. So we do have, you'll see on the graph, ordinance violations, criminal investigations as well. But you can also see that the role of the SRO is varied and important. Our offices work diligently every day to build relationships. They serve as a positive law enforcement contact, and they help to maintain a safe and supportive learning environment. A question that we've been asked is, who interacts with our SROs? Specifically, do the interactions reflect the demographics of our school? So this graph shows you the race and ethnicity of students that are currently enrolled in the secondary schools in Eau Claire. You can see on this graph that approximately seventy-seven percent of our secondary students are white, about nine percent are Asian, or five-point-six percent are Hispanic, four-point-six percent are two or more races, and almost three percent of our students are black. So before we dive into the demographic data, there's a couple of things that I need you to know. First, the data reflects a contact. For example, if I met with an SRO one time, I would get one data point. If I talked with an SRO twenty times, my data comes back as twenty data points. So we're documenting contacts rather than individual students. And that means that you might see, based on the frequency of a contact, more or less representation. Second, McKinley data is reported in the overall data, but the small number of students at McKinley make it easy to identify some students. And so for that reason, we didn't break the McKinley data down by demographic data. In some schools, there are also some cell sizes of students that are very small, and we wanted to protect the identity of those students. So we didn't report that out here either. Third, the races and ethnicities that you see here reported by the DPI, so this graph comes from the DPI, don't entirely match those that were reported in SRO data. For example, in our data, we report Alaskan native, but you don't see that for the DPI. They report Pacific Isle. We did not. So although the subgroups don't align one hundred percent, we believe that the data that you do see will still be valuable. And then finally, there are some discrepancies in the data, whether it's the number of contacts reported, the frequency of the contacts among subgroups of students, or other discrepancies. We see those, too. We want you to know that this is the first year that we've collected and reported the data. And Sergeant Wise and I are really looking at this as an opportunity to help us learn from the data, to help us grow, and to help us strengthen our partnership. So with that, I'd like to share with you the data from the Eau Claire secondary schools. So this is data for all of our secondary schools combined. You can see here that, or maybe you can't, because it's kind of small, so I'll read it for you. Sixty-seven percent of all contacts at our secondary schools were with students who were white. Eleven percent of the contacts were with students who were reported as two or more races. Ten percent with students who were black. Eight percent with students who were Hispanic, and three percent of all contacts were with students who were Asian. When this was shared with policy and governance, the committee asked us to look at which students at each building were connecting with their SRO. So I'm going to, in the next couple of slides, break this data down by school building. So as a reminder, two reminders. One, we won't pull McKinley data out because of the cell size. And then number two, if the cell size was very small at a building, as an example, you'll see some of our schools have four students who are Pacific Isle. I wouldn't report out data on those four kids, because it would possibly lead to identification. So first, DPI data for the two high schools. These graphs show the race and ethnicity of students at Memorial and North High School. And again, just a reminder that we want to maintain confidentiality. So you can see, some of these cell sizes are quite small. The cutoff that I used was twenty students or fewer. So we won't be reporting out, for example, Memorial had one student reported as American Indian. I will not report out data on that. Four students, Pacific Isle, I will not report data out on that. But when we take these students, you can see here the distribution of contacts at Memorial on the left and North on the right. One of the things that Sergeant Wise and I look for is to see if the percent of contacts are relatively close to the percent of student population at each school. are relatively close to the percent of student population at each school. At the same time, remember that if I've had several contacts with an SRO, I'm represented in the data multiple times. So, looking at this data, some things you might notice. Students who are white make up 77% of the contacts at North. Students who are black, Hispanic, or two or more really are evenly distributed, for the most part, in the remaining contacts. At North, students who are white account for 59% of the contacts. And of the remaining contacts, one half of those contacts are for students who are black. And the other half are more evenly distributed among Hispanic, Asian, and two or more races. One of the things that Jennifer, my assistant, and I did reflect on as we were compiling this data was just the ability to pull out individual students so we can account for, you know, me having 20 or more contacts. As I said, this is a learning year. We didn't have the ability to do that this year, so next year, when we pull data again, that is one of the things that we'll look to do. So, looking at the middle schools, you'll see the demographic makeup of our three middle schools. Again, when we reported out, we have removed cell sizes that are smaller than 20 in order to maintain confidentiality. It might be easier for you to look at this on your own screen, but just for kind of generalities, DeLong Middle School, about 75% of the students are white. The largest, the next largest group is Asian at 11.4%. North Star, 77% of the students are white, and the next largest group again is students who are Asian at 9.8%. And South Middle School, 75% of the students are white, and the next largest group would be students who are Hispanic at about 9%. And when we break down the middle school data, you'll see here what the data looked like. You can see below the graphs, the subgroups that I pulled out. So, at DeLong Middle School, American Indians were not reported. At North Star, American Indians and black students were not reported to protect the confidentiality of the students. And then at South Middle School, American was not reported. At each of the three middle schools, the majority of the contacts were made with students who were white. At South and DeLong, you can see a fairly even distribution among contacts, with contacts for students who are from other groups. Where at North Star, students who are two or more races had a significant portion of the remaining contacts. What this data, or the high school data, doesn't tell us is what the conversations or the interactions with the SRO's were in each one of those contacts. We can look, though, to see what happened as a result of the contacts. So, I would like to shift then to our next question, which is what happens when our SRO's and our students connect? After each contact with families, students, and staff, the SRO documents the disposition or the results of that conversation. You can see here that SRO contacts can lead to an arrest or a referral. That happened 128 times this year. Nearly 1,000 contacts with an SRO, though, resulted in something other than that. Our SRO's facilitated counseling or education about the law. They mentored students. They made referrals for wraparound support from community agencies, or they recommended school-based consequences. Our SRO's understand adolescents. They understand child development and supporting students, and they do support the mission of the Eau Claire School District. Again, this data tells part of the story. When we disaggregate it, we'd like to share a little bit more of that story with you. Here you'll see the disposition, or the distribution of each disposition by race or ethnicity at each of our high schools. One way to analyze these graphs is to look at the representation by race or ethnicity across multiple dispositions. For example, where students that were two or more races, so that would be the green bars in each school, are they represented in law counsel? Are they represented in mentoring? Are they represented in juvenile referral? Another way to analyze it is to look at the size of each color in each bar in relation to the proportion of students that the demographic group represents. For example, the majority of our SRO contacts are with students who are white, so then it would make sense that the majority of each bar, the largest portion of each bar would be dark blue, which is representing white students. And here is the disposition, or the outcomes, for our middle school students and their contacts with SRO's as they're broken out by demographic group. Again, looking for the distribution of color between the bars and within a bar on the graph. As I stated earlier, this is really our first year that we've had such robust data around the SRO's and student contacts. Sergeant Wise and I look at this as a good starting point with the data, and we look forward to refining the data collection over time and to impacting the data through our continued partnership. We're excited by what we see, but we also see opportunities for action plans, and those will be, you know, steps in the near future. And so with that, I'd like to turn over the next few slides to Sergeant Wise to talk a little bit more about some of the requirements within Policy 445.
All right. So, again, I'm Andy Wise with the Eau Claire Police Department. I work out of our detective division and oversee the youth services section, which also includes the SRO's. I do have them here today. I promised they didn't have to talk, but maybe they could stand up or raise a hand because I know you guys probably don't get to see them every day, but the lively group back there. So, I am, I do appreciate being here and having the opportunity to share all of the great things that not only SRO's are doing, but also in partnership with the school district and just those professional relationships that they've developed with the staff and made us better, and they hopefully have made the administration a little better, too. So, just kind of moving forward here, I'll go through a few slides, and then we'll be available for some questions at the end here, too. As the ECSD Board, Policy 445 outlines, not only the district's commitment, but the Eau Claire Police Department's commitment to training our SRO's. We realize that's a priority and that's a must. So, the policy outlines the several areas. You guys can see those on here. The developmental levels of students, cultural competency, implicit bias, special education law, trauma-informed practices, mental health, and then many others. And we could also add in some of the school safety and threat assessment things that the SRO's have worked on over the last couple of years. Next slide there. All right. So, here's kind of a long list of some of the trainings that are really specific to youth and serving youth and mental health, and I'll kind of go through some of these in a second here. So, the school resource officers are specially trained police officers. Our SRO's are committed to professional development through various educational opportunities. In addition to that, they serve on youth-serving committees and organizations. The, for example, the Juvenile Justice Collaborative Committee, made up of, you know, community members that all look to serve youth and do things best practice. The Eau Claire County DEC, which is the Drug Engager Children Program. MDT and Alliance, Multidisciplinary Team and Alliance, which focuses on youth as victims. So, I think there's a lot to be learned from those groups and the collaboration that comes along with that. So, just like I said, I wanted to highlight some of the trainings that the SRO's have participated in because I think, especially as we look at the demographics and their contacts, I think it does kind of help shed some light on the training that I believe makes them the good SRO's that they are. Improving youth interactions through fair and impartial justice. That's a really important one, maybe one of the most important ones as it pertains to this information. I think that this training makes them more mindful in their everyday interactions with at-risk youth especially. Focusing on relationship building. I think we all can kind of understand the importance of that, and that's a huge value for our SRO's in the school, being that mentor. But in addition to that, looking at diversion opportunities. It's a regular, daily, multiple times a day process for the SRO's, a lot of phone calls back and forth and just discussions. It's not as easy as just, let's refer this kid or cite this kid. It really does take kind of the army, so to speak, to kind of help and serve those kids. So, I think some of those are evidenced by not just the case-by-case situation and making the best decision of what to do with that kid, a plan for the future, but would also be some of the things that they've worked on and really, quite honestly, helped initiate and support with diversion programming, the truancy dollars for days. It's been very helpful. It's in its infant stages as well, so there's a lot of room to grow there. And then the vaping awareness initiative through the Eau Claire County Juvenile Justice Program, which I think is needed, and that's a different approach. We don't just want to cite people. We want kids to learn from that. So, again, that was something that was really heavily pushed by the SRO program. So, just a couple of examples here. Trauma-informed care and the ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences, I kind of merged those two, and I'd actually take it a step further and merge it with just the overall mental health training that our SRO's have been through. We have a very comprehensive mental health training through our crisis intervention team training. Our SRO's have been through that, learning those different techniques on active listening and de-escalation, which we know when kids are in a crisis, or anybody's in a crisis for that matter, and just the ability to kind of navigate that and stay calm and be able to help that person work through that and not focus so much on the behavior or the outcome of whatever's going on. So, they're training the trauma-informed care practices and ACEs. I think this helps the SRO's understand the bigger picture, as I call it, in a person's life. The sin return impacts the way students approach regardless of the situation. And I think in many cases, the SRO's able to refer the issues to the school, back to the school ideally, where maybe some other services are available, or to the families. Sometimes it's just letting the families know, hey, this is what's going on, and we want to work with you and allow the families and the parents to take the lead on that through counseling or whatever it might be, or through DHS. And regardless, the goal is always to look at, I guess, the least restrictive means and using kind of the evidence-based policing philosophies and avoiding the criminal justice system as much as possible at this point. So, understanding it's a learning environment, and we learn through mistakes sometimes. So, in addition to that completed training you see here, the Eau Claire Police Department will be training this year, early 2021 probably, in refresh a training on fair and impartial policing, implicit bias, and microaggressions. So, those are all trainings that we've either had, or we'll just kind of expand upon the knowledge base that we've had there. So, those are good things to look forward to. Because of the training that our SRO's have, I think they're prepared for anything. They're prepared for any different type of case or issue, and I think that, you know, that speaks to the competence, compassion, and professionalism that they offer the school each and every day. So, lastly, as far as the slides go, the Eau Claire Police Department is committed to policing in our model and partnership with our community. I see it on our squad cars. We know that our partnership with the Eau Claire School District is my personal favorite, just because I enjoy what we do, but I think it is probably one of the most important partnerships that we have. I think we can all agree keeping our schools safe and keeping our children in a healthy, safe, learning environment is priority number one. So, I think we're able to demonstrate that because of those important and meaningful relationships with students and their families, and I think that it's clearly a direct result of this that our schools are a safer learning environment for all. I'll just conclude that our department is humbled and grateful for the opportunity to work in the schools. We are a community as a whole. We're all in this together, and I think that we're able to demonstrate that every day with the work that we do to support each other.
So, I just want to go back to the three requirements within Policy 445, which are to review the policy. That work has been done. Policy and Governance has talked about the policy. There are no recommended changes from administration to Policy 445. The MOU has also been reviewed. Abby had some conversation just around questions and procedures, but no recommended changes for the MOU. And then when we look at the data review, there are really probably three things that we would say moving forward. One, refine the data collection and the reporting, just to develop some consistency. Some of it, to be honest with you, was with the way the data came to the administrative office. So, SRO's collect the data. Administrators at the school have access to that data. And then, you know, student privacy and confidentiality is very important. So, when it was shared with the administration office, many schools took the student name off, which is a good thing, except if I want to try to peel out how many individual contacts there are. If I don't have the student names, I can't do that. So, that's something that we'll work on for next year. I appreciate and respect the desire for privacy and protecting our students in that, though. And then the second thing, I will be sharing this data with the schools and putting those small cell sizes back in for the administrators, so they'll be able to see that, all of the data, and they'll be able then to talk with their SRO's to develop any plans to address needs that they see within that data. And so with that, Sergeant Wise and I are ready for questions and discussion.
Thank you very much for this report. I remember when we were discussing the terms of the MOU. I do appreciate the effort to collect all this important data, which contributes to, it helps us understand the dynamics in the school setting with, between students and teachers and principals and SRO's. So, we are very, very thankful for your leadership and your service. Now, we have some questions. Yes, Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Thank you. I think you may have answered it, Kim, but just want to be sure. So, when we look at that category that's unknown, not disclosed, and there are 57 contact points there, is that where you talk about you need to refine that data collection a little bit more, like the schools maybe stripped out some of the information, so you couldn't quite figure out what that was?
That really popped up in a couple of circumstances. One could have been a group of students came and it was reported as one point of contact, even though there were three or four students who may have been reporting a concern. Or it could have been an adult from the community contacting SRO's. Remember, the vast majority of contacts are initiated by somebody coming to the SRO. We don't necessarily have the demographic data on our parents or on community members in general, so that could have been the case if it was the demographic data. Or were you talking about the outcome?
No, I think I was talking about your slide, what happens when they connect?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The disposition. And so there's, there's like 57 unknown, not disclosed.
So, that, in that piece in particular, some of the data fields were filled and other data fields were empty.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I can speak on the other just briefly here. If it's easy when it's a juvenile referral and arrest, a citation, school-based discipline, there's a whole lot, those categories are easy. The other is where we struggle. We're trying to figure out if there is a lot of consistency within that group so we can fine-tune that. So, sometimes it's just people, we weren't quite sure where to put it. So, if it was an arrest, it wasn't like, well, let's put that in other. It would go down as an arrest. So, I think that's what we're going to work on now, just to fine-tune.
Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Alliance?
Could you tell me a little bit about proactive contacts? What's involved in a proactive contact?
Yeah, it could be a variety of things. Sometimes it's a school that is contacting the SRO to say, hey, we have a student that we think would be a nice connection for you to kind of build that mentorship and to reach out to them. Sometimes it's just because we have that relationship with a student. We run a junior police academy, so we make about 60 new friends every year. So, sometimes it's just, hey, how's it going? And we're checking in with them. Could be a student that just struggles with something, and they meet with the SRO on a regular basis. meet with the SRO on a regular basis, say, once a week. They do set up incentive plans where, you know, if the student has done the things that the school's expected of them, they hang out with the SRO, they get to do some fun stuff. And so we kind of incentivize that. So I would say they're generally all positive in nature, and it's, I think those are probably the more enjoyable contacts for the SROs, because it's why they're there, to build those relationships.
I think there's perhaps a danger of when you're looking at this data, that a contact with an SRO could be perceived as a negative contact. And it's good to know. My head swims with the idea that anytime you have a contact, you're collecting this data and you're putting a report together. So, I guess I kind of, speaking out loud, wonder if there's a value in what happens with this data once you're finished with it.
Yeah, I think the initial thought with that was to be as transparent as we can. And I think, you know, we as a group take a lot of pride in what we do, but also realize people have questions sometimes. And, you know, I think this, the idea was to paint as clear a picture of what we do on a daily basis. And so I think there is value in that. If a student were to, say, start to struggle, maybe you could look at that, and it would maybe help between, within at least the building to say, the student did so well for a while, now what happened? You know, we can kind of go back to the trauma-informed care practices, maybe just to help understand. So, I don't know that it's, I think they're used to it now, so we'd like to keep them going. But, yeah, I understand your point.
Commissioner Lyons, that too may be related somewhat to the question that you asked about unknown. So sometimes, you know, in a busy day, perhaps they were starting a document, a piece of documentation, something else came up. And so, it was incomplete. I think you're right. It is, it's a big ask of the SROs to document every contact that they have with students, but the data has been very helpful. And I think it paints a nice picture of what they do in the buildings.
Dr. Nordin.
Thanks for being here tonight and sharing this data. Kim, you kind of alluded to some of this earlier, but one of the things that stands out immediately is the over-representation of students of color in contacts, sometimes smaller. And, you know, certainly there are many positive interactions with the SROs in the school. But also, if we look at, you know, some of these charts, the dispositions from the different schools, especially black students and students of two or more races are, you know, overrepresented in what I would call the negative contacts sort of area, the referrals, the disciplines. And I think you've kind of talked a little bit about, oh, you've offered some, you know, there's, if it's multiple contacts, you know, it's a person getting, that only probably goes so far into overrepresentation, because why is that one student there 20 times? I mean, if it's positive, great. If we're, you know, obviously, if you're building a relationship, and I know our SROs do that, and they build relationships with interview of students, it's super valuable. I just, I guess I'd like to hear more about, you know, this is the first year we've seen this data, so there's no, oh, we're getting worse, we're getting better. What's the, like, thoughts, the initial thoughts towards that action plan? You're talking about action plans for needs, and to me, that jumps out immediately as an area of concern. And I'm sure that you've already noticed it. And so I'd just like to hear more about what's going to be done to address that.
And to be honest with you, if I can just be very blunt, I put that on us, because our job as administrators and our job as teachers, or our job as the SEA or the custodian, is to create an engaging and welcoming climate for all students. And sometimes, whether it is SRO data or PBIS data, so how often does a student come to the office for a discipline referral, major, minor, or something with the SRO? When we see students start to pop up or frequently visit, that's really a reflection of how well our program is or is not working for the child. So as administrators, we track that data. And if we start to see, for example, that you've been in the office five times in the course of a month, we're obligated to change what we do. Because you being in the office five times in the course of a month is really a symptom of something else. So, the nice thing about this data is it does tell us that for some data points, or at some schools, or at all of our schools, we have some programming that is working better for some students than it is for other students. So we can start to have conversations around what does that programming look like, and what do we need to do differently?
So I guess I look forward to hearing the outcomes of those conversations as soon as they happen.
Me, too.
Any more questions? Commissioner Vu?
I wonder if there was any value, if you were to look at the proportion of students that were not in contact in comparison to students that were in contact. An example of that, data like that would point out ways how we can channel resource and make the referral appropriately.
So, just to clarify, are you asking for the, what, for example, what percent of the total student population is represented in those graphs? Or have SROs had contact with 25% of our student population versus 60%, versus 80%?
Looking at the whole total population, but then you segregate it out.
Okay.
And it's helpful to see the next step of segregation.
Thank you.
More questions for the presenters? I have a couple of questions. The first one would be, it was not clear to me what percentage of those contacts become juvenile issues. And for those who did become juvenile issues, what is the distribution by race? And then also by gender?
I can answer part of that. There were 128 citations or referrals, juvenile referrals or adult arrests, based on the contacts with SROs. What I can't tell you is, for the adult arrests, were they all adult students, 18 years or older? Or were some of them based on perhaps a contact with an SRO that ended up in the arrest of somebody in the community because of what a child reported to them? But there were 128, and there were nearly 1,000 times where an SRO was in contact with somebody where it didn't result in a citation, juvenile referral, or arrest. So if I do very quick math, I think that's about 90% of the time. Help me out, somebody with a calculator.
I was interested in the desegregation by race and gender.
And I don't, I can get, I can do a memo if Dr. Hardbeck would like. I don't have the percents labeled, but I could do that in a memo. I have the data.
Thank you. I heard you were getting, you were announcing plans to take this information back to the school buildings and start a conversation with principals and leaderships at the building level. I think that is very important. That was the purpose of this effort to collect data, because as we said over a year ago, discipline issues are principals' issues. And we want the less amount of those referred to the SROs. So this gives us good information for them to discuss and see if their protocols need some revision, and if their priorities are clear for all, and if the procedures are in place, which will, you know, indicate if this data is being used thoroughly. Another question, perhaps for Sergeant Wise and/or through Sergeant Wise to the Police Department. I think it would be important for us to have additional female school resource officers and persons of color in the team. And I know that you cannot respond to that right now, but that remains an aspiration. If you don't have any more questions, then we will thank your reporting. And Sergeant Wise, we look forward to continue working, collaborating with you and your team. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Our next point in the agenda is referendum calendar discussion.
So shall I be in?
Dr. Hardbeck?
Okay. At our last meeting, you approved the election in April of 2021 as the date for, the target date for possible referendum. In order to meet that election date, there are a number of tasks that have to be completed. And those task lists have been distributed to you in your board materials, along with a draft of a calendar that might suggest some timelines for you to follow in terms of meeting that task list. There are a couple of things that need to be determined and decided by the May 18th board meeting. And at the March 16th date board meeting, we are suggesting that you set dates for the school board work sessions on the referendum. You would, my advice to you would be to work through your agenda-setting committee, to have them review the calendar and figure out which dates might work for you, because I know you have other commitments in terms of the superintendent search. But it will be important for you to schedule those work sessions about the referendum. And then to approve those dates on March 16th, so that people can make plans in terms of providing you with the information that you will need, and also that you can get commitment from the board members to attend those meetings. And then the second thing that you need to do before May 18th is to approve dates for four community forums. So, for example, you heard tonight that a lot of the talk about the referendum has been in terms of capital needs, but I'm hearing that community members might have other ideas as well for you to lead to a referendum that might be part operational, part capital, and that will influence how you set your questions. So it's important to get that feedback from the community in April. And then by April 20th, you would want to take into consideration any recommendations from the Budget Development Committee. And that will, as well as the feedback from the community forums. That would be a discussion that you would have at the May 4th board meeting. And then on May 18th, you would vote on the Budget Development Committee's recommendations in going forward with the referendum. And there would be then all kinds, as you can see, other tasks that would have to be accomplished in order to address those recommendations. So, our recommendation is that you establish a calendar at the next board meeting, based on the work and the proposals that you do in the agenda-setting committee, and that you set the date for the school board work sessions and the dates for the four community forums, at the very least.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. Any questions for Dr. Hardbeck? Hearing none, then we can start tomorrow with the agenda-setting part of it.
Thank you.
Our last point in the agenda is discussion on possible first reading of changes to policy 840 gifts to the Eau Claire Area School District. This is a short one.
In that case, I volunteer to read it.
Thank you, Dr. Nordin.
The Board shall comply with Wisconsin Statute 118.27 in the acceptance and use of gifts of money or property.
Thank you. Any questions about this first reading? Questions? Hearing none, then we'll include this in our consent agenda for the next session for its final approval, second reading and final approval. Thank you. Any requests for I would like for a couple of board members to volunteer in the interview of student representatives for next year's board. So if you are inclined to take that task, please let me know. And hearing that there are no other future agenda items, then I'll receive a motion to adjourn. So moved by Commissioner Vu and a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harder. All those who approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, session is adjourned. Thank you very much.